Bob Johnson. Bob has nine minutes, followed by Peter Thorson, who has six.
Good morning Supervisor Tavalloni and Board members. I'm Bob Johnson, City Manager for the City of Temecula. I will be brief and focus my presentation on three points. First, the City of Temecula commends the Board of Supervisors for bringing forward a revised fast-track policy in its effort to help the economy and encourage hiring veterans, contractors based in Riverside County, and the unemployed. The City of Temecula clearly understands that the economy will only be fixed by job growth, which is one of the six basic goals in our recently adopted Quality of Life Master Plan. Second, the City strongly supports creating real jobs, not theoretical jobs. The problem with the fast-track process for surface mining is it will not create new jobs, just reshuffle jobs. In plain terms, a new service mine like Liberty Quarry will take business away from existing mines in the county, and that's when it opens, which is probably a decade away. Fast-tracking of service mining will not create new jobs, only move old jobs from existing mines and existing communities to some other place. This does not solve the problem of creating new jobs today or in the future. Third, as evidenced by an 8,000-page EIR and 10,000 more pages of expert peer review and comments from the public, surface mining projects are enormous. So why fast-track a surface mining project that is being litigated? A project that will be tied up in legal challenges for multiple years? This fast-tracking discussion reminds me of a saying I heard over and over again when I was an aircraft maintenance officer in the Air Force many years ago. Hurry up and wait. How will rushing the approval process through fast-track create any new jobs in the foreseeable future? After all, that is what I thought the fast-track process was supposed to accomplish. And this leads directly to my fourth and final point. The county is in the midst of litigation of a proposed surface mining project. Likewise, the county is also in the midst of litigation over a solar project. County Council advised this board two weeks ago that it would not be appropriate to include solar energy as part of the county's fast-track policy because of its pending litigation. I quote Pam Als. "The request to exclude solar from renewable energy projects from that 'fast-track' policy emanated from our office." And the feeling was, because of pending litigation, there is really a need to bring that before the Planning Commission and vet these on an individual basis there before bringing them to the Board. The City of Temecula agrees. New proposed projects in the midst of litigation should not be fast-tracked and should be brought before the Planning Commission to be vetted on an individual basis, as advised by County Council. Supervisor Benoit also conveyed that solar projects should be removed from the fast-track policy for the purpose of avoiding confusion during litigation. And Supervisor Tavalloni also conveyed in his discussion on fast-tracking that renewable energy projects could be appropriately fast-tracked unless they are pending litigation. We agree with the Board that it is inappropriate to fast-track new projects like Liberty Quarry and a mine in litigation. So you have to agree, it's a bit confusing for us. The County Council advised the Board that it's okay to fast-track surface mines in litigation, but it's not okay to fast-track solar projects in litigation. The City of Temecula respectfully requests that you do not include surface mining as part of your fast-track ordinance amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Peter Thorson. Peter, you have six minutes, followed by Gary Smith, who have nine.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Peter Thorson and I'm City Attorney for the City of Temecula. City of Temecula urges you to vote no on the proposed motion to introduce the ordinances that would amend the zoning ordinance and the surface mine ordinance and exempt surface mines from Planning Commission review on the county's fast-track policy. We provided the County Board and the staff with our letter that outlined the legal basis for our objections, and in that letter we specifically addressed the statutes and cases that we believe rather these questionable legality. We believe the proposed amendments are illegal for three reasons, primary reasons. First, the amendments to the zoning ordinance and the surface mining ordinance require notice public hearings before both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. No such hearings have been held. The government code and the case law requires the county to analyze the impacts of this particular amendment and hold these public hearings. We disagree with the County Council's analysis of whether these hearings are required. We agree that certainly an ordinance that changes land from one zone to another or changes development standards are clearly called for in that hearing statute. But that statute also specifically requires that regulations relating to natural resources be subject to these two hearings. The hearings on the fast-track policy are not simply procedural hearings. If you look at the cases we've cited, under the California statute for Planning Commission review, those cases specifically hold that Planning Commission review of land use projects is a substantive fundamental right and needs to be preserved. So if you're going to change the ordinance to allow fast-tracking without Planning Commission hearing, that ordinance clearly has to be vetted by the Planning Commission. Second, we do not believe that Riverside County has the authority under state law to simply pick and choose what projects go to fast-track and which ones do not. This is especially true where the policy provides that that important decision is delegated to a non-elected county official. There may have been some limited authority for that under redevelopment, but as we all know, the redevelopment is dead, and whatever limited authority there was is now gone. Third, we also agree with the comments filed in other letters that the Board has failed to comply with CECL. The common sense objection that says we know for sure there's no impact is an important one, but it requires that there be some evidence in the record that you have looked at potential impacts. And there is no such evidence in that record. The Board, as City Manager Johnson pointed out, is rightly concerned about the impact of fast-track on policies on existing litigation. As he pointed out on September 11th, you exempted out the solar projects from the fast-track policy based on the County Council's analysis, which is very important. The County Council said we need to take these out of fast-track to better vet those projects before the Planning Commission, to better vet those projects. And so, along with three members of this Board and the County Council, we think that analysis absolutely applies to fast-tracking of surface mining projects. Surface mining projects, not only, as you know, as well as we do, involve a tremendous amount of controversy, but there are a lot of legal issues involved. You have the two lawsuits that have been filed challenging the certification of the EIR. You have the discussion that will go on before the state as to whether the surface mining changes to the ordinance are valid, the audit that's been going on. All of these make surface mines incredibly complex. The Board is obviously interested in promoting jobs in Riverside County. Each member of this Board, as well as each City Council member in every city in Riverside County, the county staff, and each member of the staff in each city is also interested in promoting jobs. When you talk about fast-tracking, there may be some validity to getting a good project that will generate jobs out, but we suggest to you that the best way to do that is to devote more county resources to the staff. Provide more staff, provide more resources so they can completely and thoroughly analyze the project. I think if you did a study, you would find that the two or three days that the Planning Commission takes reviewing a project is far less than the eight or nine months that it takes the staff to adequately go through and look at a project. So if you really want to fast-track projects, look at the staff and not just at the Planning Commission. In conclusion, it is good public policy and good legal policy to have these types of projects go before the Planning Commission as well as the Board. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Peter. Gary Smith. Gary Smith, Dr. Gary Smith, nine minutes, followed by Marie, I'm excuse me, Marielle Dorsey.
Excuse me, I have a power. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Gary Smith. I've submitted written and oral testimony to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Supervisors regarding the economic cost and benefits of Liberty Quarry.
Gary, I'm going to ask you to, you're a pretty tall guy, so.
Okay, good. Thank you. What I want to talk about today is fast-tracking and the importance of the Planning Commission in that role. The Planning Commissioners read hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of testimony. And at those hearings, which I participated in, there was a lot of back and forth. They asked proving, intelligent, decisive questions back and forth between the experts and the Planning Commissioners. And there were several what I call aha moments, where the experts said things which contradicted which were in their written reports. I'm going to give you four examples today. Can I find which button to push? First one is, the Hugheson report claims there's $171.5 million annual benefits from this quarry. That number was bandied about for years. So I was brought in, I was asked to look at the report, and I found out that of that $171.9 million, it's .5 million, excuse me, $149.6 million was actually Granite's profits. It was not a benefit for Riverside County. Now, to his credit, when John Hugheson testified before the Planning Commission, he admitted that this was a mistake, that he should not have counted it. I estimated that it brings into the region $149.6 million in energy. He doesn't want to use the word profits, he calls it energy. Now, there's a separate question, and that is the benefit. How much of this energy benefits those who live within the region? Different question. Yes, it is. There, the answer coming out of my work is $21.9 million. We've lost almost all the benefit right there. This is the Granite's expert testifying. There was a mistake in my work, which I grant, the two numbers should not have been added together, since they are different concepts. So that's the first aha moment. Mr. Hugheson admitted before the Planning Commission that his numbers on the financial benefits from this quarry were grossly exaggerated. $149.6 out of $171.5 should not have been counted. What about the $21.9? That comes from the 99 jobs that we've been hearing forever. It's sort of like the big lie thing. You say the thing long enough and people will believe it. What did Mr. Hugheson say when he testified before the Planning Commission? It's not demand that has increased by acquiring, it is the supply. Whether or not you have this facility, the demand is the demand. All that will change is where it comes from. And that's exactly right. Right now, you've got about 50 quarries in Riverside County producing about, on average, 20 million tons of aggregate per year. If you bring in a new quarry that produces 4 million tons of aggregate, is production going to go up to 24 million tons? No. Production is determined by demand. And as Mr. Hugheson says, demand is demand. All that will change is where the material comes from. If the Liberty Quarry produces 4 million tons, that means quarries in Corona, Elsinore, and other parts of Riverside County are going to produce 4 million fewer tons. So the second aha moment was, what's actually going to happen here is not that production will increase, jobs will be created, production's going to shift, and jobs are going to shift. Third aha moment. I read this Hugheson report pointing to be the economic cost of benefits. Amazingly, they don't cost it. It's the first time I've ever seen a cost-benefit analysis with no cost. Okay, we'll start thinking about quarries, they obviously have cost. Here you've got a proposed project situated in a wind tunnel above a thriving community. You think about property values, think about tourist activity, traffic congestion, agricultural crops, health costs, quality of life. We came up with a number of $50 to $150 million a year in cost. And at the Planning Commission hearings, there was back and forth between the experts and between the Commissioners about the number. For me, I think the most telling argument, and the one you should consider, is that the Temecula Valley Convention and Business Bureau, and the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the City Council are all opposed to Liberty Quarry. Now, why would they say we don't want to steal 99 jobs from Corona and Elsinore and bring them down to Temecula? Because they must think, and the other ones who know, they must think they're going to lose more than 99 jobs in the industries they have down there right now. Next aha moment. Mr. Hugheson brought up something that is nowhere in his report. At the Planning Commission hearings, he started talking about environmental justice as being the main question on the table. What is this issue truly all about? Why are we all here? Why is it so intense? And I would suggest that the answer to that is really differing views, what I term as a term of art, environmental justice. He goes on. "If you look at the document coming from Rose, which I co-authored, they make the following observation. Many of the projected benefits from this project would be the same, approximately the same, in other locations, but the cost would be substantially lower if the quarry were not located so close to a thriving community." That is, I suspect, the point of view of a great number of people who are in this room, indeed. However, Mr. Hugheson argued that the issue is not that, the issue is environmental justice. Environmental justice calls upon growing communities to bear some of the burden of their own expansion. Well, the aha moment here is, in the written report, there are no costs. In the oral testimony, all of a sudden, there is a burden. And the argument is not about whether or not there are costs, the argument is who should pay the cost. And his argument is Temecula should bear the burden. Well, the interesting thing about that argument, which appeared at the Planning Commission hearings, was that 2/3 of the stankards going down to San Diego County. Commissioner Payton asked the obvious question. What is fascinating to me is your argument about environmental justice. Why is this project in Temecula? What you're saying is, so that the streets of La Jolla can be repaved, we have to have Temecula suffer, so that Corona suffers less. Temecula's suffering more because aggregate's being produced down there, Corona's suffering less because they're producing less aggregate. Remember, production and jobs are going out of Corona down into Temecula. Mr. Hugheson's answer was amazing. I'm not disagreeing with what you just said. If we're sitting here having a hearing in San Diego about not opening a facility in San Diego, the logic I'm using is identical. I agree with you. First point. You've gotten away from the written report where there are no costs. Now we have the admission, there's a burden, there's suffering, and the question is, who should pay the burden? Who should endure the suffering? And what Mr. Hugheson said, what is the Liberty Quarry were down in San Diego, he'd be down there arguing, that's exactly where it should be. What I would like you to think about is the fact that in the Planning Commission hearings, there were these four aha moments I'm talking about. There's actually a lot more, but I don't have time for four. Granite's profits benefit Riverside, oral testimony, admission they don't. Jobs will be created, oral testimony, admission they won't. Written report, quarries have no cost, oral testimony, admission they do. And then this brand-new issue about environmental justice, which is really an argument why the quarry should be in San Diego or some other part of Riverside County. You know, quarries are a momentous decision, but they're controversial. With a warehouse, you can always use it for something else, or you can bulldoze it. With a quarry you can't put together, the mountain's been destroyed, and you can't undo the damage that's been done to a community. That's why these hearings have been so lengthy and so intense. And I would add, I would submit to you that these four aha moments never would have happened if this project had been fast-tracked and the Planning Commission had been avoided. It was only with the Planning Commission hearings these things came out, these four aha moments, which I believe is why the Planning Commission voted overwhelmingly against the project. I would also like you to think about the fact that not only is this an important decision that you should get right, but also at stake is the credibility of the process. If you fast-track something that's important, that, as an ordinance as this, the credibility of the project, credibility of the process is threatened. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, Marielle Dorsey, six minutes, followed by Rebecca Ledwig.
Good morning, Chairman Tavalloni and Supervisors. My name is Morrell Dorsey. I'm asking you to vote against the amendments for the two ordinances, but I think I would now say that unless you would go along Jeff Stone's amendments. Jobs are needed in the county, and fast-tracking can be a good idea. However, that is if three criteria can be met. First, the project should actually be proven to be able to create net jobs and not hurt the economy. Secondly, the project should provide jobs relatively fast, or why bother to save only a couple of months of public hearings? Third, there should not be environmentally controversial problems. As far as Liberty Quarry is concerned, the first criteria concerning net job creation and economic growth was proven to be false, as you just heard. During the hearings, the Claremont Mechanic College prestigious Rose Institute presented its economic report. Lack of a need for aggregate was stated as the reason why new quarry jobs would just be offset by reduction in jobs of other quarries. Renna Construction's own economist explained at the Planning Commission hearing that a new quarry supply would not create new demand, as you just heard. The Rose Institute report also gave $3.6 billion as the conservative loss to the county over 50 years, and proved that jobs in many industries would be lost and real estate would be negatively affected. As a local agent who represented hundreds of Realtor opposition statements that I handed to, who represented the Realtors, handed you the opposition statements at the hearings, I can now testify that we have proved that the Rose Institute economic experts were correct that the quarry would harm real estate values. On February 16, 2012, there was jubilation over the supposed end of the quarry threat. Buyers were excited to buy. However, there was a dramatic change in their attitudes after Granite Construction's July 25 resubmission of a new Liberty Quarry, which although it is slightly smaller, can always be expanded in the future. This, of course, had to be disclosed to buyers according to California law, and all the agents I contacted complained. I personally lost four in-process escrows in one month. The asking prices of the homes all had to be reduced, while two were forced to be sold as short sales. Lower prices mean less county property taxes. And what about the devastation to these sellers? Also considered that the 1,000-plus member Temecula Chamber of Commerce opposes the quarry. Do they not care about businesses or jobs? Both Liberty Quarry and wind turbine projects cannot meet the second criteria. The community expects that fast-tracking equates with getting jobs created fast. It will take years to get permit approval for large CECL projects. I called the Army Corps of Engineers to check on what the length of their permit processes for Liberty Quarry would be. The South Coast Branch Chief Therese O'Breadford asked Project Manager Biologist RJ Van Sant to supply me with information. I have given you copies of his emails. They're in your packet. JR's 9-2012 email concerned core records of Liberty Quarry project. I quote, "We did assign in a project number back in 2005. Because we have no permit application, we've taken no action." His 9-1912 email explains in detail how a larger controversial project would take at least one to two years, with lots of possibilities for extended timetable. In addition to the Army Corps and Water Quality Agency's permits need to be given by the Air Quality Agency EPA, the California School Lands Department for the lease, among others. None of this can be fast-tracked. I don't think waiting for years would satisfy people who need a job now. As far as the wind turbines are concerned, my handout today includes information provided by the California Energy Commission. CECL processes, state and federal regulations and laws are referenced. For example, the California Department of Fish and Game have an important part in the process protecting birds and bats so they are not threatened by wind turbines. As a side note, I found out in 2011 that in the Palm Springs area, turbines had to have meteorological or met stations on-site for a whole year to record wind patterns before being allowed. I shared this fact during my presentation at the Liberty Quarry hearings. It amazed me that a $300,000 turbine would require an on-site, one-year professional wind study. However, Granite used only partial data from SD State University students gathered 600 feet below the quarry's mountainside in a valley and located about two miles away. The EIR stated mountains and valleys affect air quality, but did not account for the poor data. I'll slip heavily this much.
You have 15 minutes, wait, 15 seconds.
Okay. I didn't talk fast enough.
Sorry.
Okay. The last one is, the third criteria is that a project that has the potential to negatively affect the environment and health of citizens should not be fast-tracked. Continuing on this road is sure to have dire consequences for all involved, including those who voted for you and gave you their trust. I urge you not to change the ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Marielle. Rebecca Ledwig. Rebecca will be followed by Paul Jacobs, will be followed by Ernie Saldana.
My name is Rebecca Ledwig, and I am totally opposed to fast-tracking. I think I've spoken on this issue before. You are eliminating a process that you should keep in place. After what I've seen all of these supervisors do at one time or another, you are putting things where they do not belong just to say that you did something. And I really take offense to your PR man, who is so unprofessional, Mr. Ray Smith, to have the audacity to tell me to remove my no quarry sign from my walker when everyone else is wearing t-shirts either for or against this project. He's being a bully. I should not be treated that way. He didn't even have the audacity to tell me himself, he told an officer to tell me. And so if anybody else has an issue with me having a little sign because I don't have a t-shirt to wear, then, you know, get over it. I do not believe that fast-tracking is a good thing. You are eliminating too many things. It's going to be subject to mistakes happening, and then it's going to be too late for you to even try and correct these things. Please stop and think about what you're doing. And as far as jobs, we're all hurting. And let's face it, you Planning Commission denied it, you guys denied it, and believe it or not, I told them you were going to find a way to bring it back. And I'll be a son of a gun if you didn't do that. And now I made them believers. So, I mean, you're almost predictable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rebecca. Paul Jacobs. Paul Jacobs will be followed by Ernie Saldana, who will be followed by, I think Wayne Hall. It's hard to read the first name. Mr. and Mrs. Hall. Go ahead, Paul.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Supervisors, County Staff, and Citizens. My name is Paul Jacobs, a Temecula resident and City Council candidate. The fast-track proposal before you is a grotesque subversion of the public planning process. This is a shameless effort to reverse a multi-year series of hearings where the Planning Commission ruled 4 to 1 to deny Liberty Quarry. And, but for a logical maneuver by Chairman Tavalloni, this board denied Liberty Quarry in a 3 to 2 vote. Now Supervisor Benoit wants to backdoor the public process by changing the rules to allow for a blast-tracked Liberty Quarry. How is it that Granite Construction gets considerations from the county that company representatives never asked for publicly? The favoritism and virtual advocacy of the County Planning Department for the approval of Liberty Quarry is beyond suspicious. Furthermore, using the innocuous sounding term of surface mining is the worst form of deceit for a quarry that will blast upwind of the Temecula Valley six days a week. The press enterprise took us deeper into Fantasyland by describing surface mining as... The press enterprise took us deeper into Fantasyland by describing surface mining as, quote, "an above-ground pit." It's apparently a ground pit that floats and defies physics. Surface mining. Granite Construction is just going to take a little off the top, like a haircut, using explosives to blast a hole as deep as a skyscraper. Supervisor Benoit, you are telling the people of Tem-- why are you telling the people of Temecula to go pound sand? I believe this proposal circumvents a legal public process of due diligence that rejected the Liberty Quarry project. I cannot wait to be elected to fulfill my first campaign promise. Tonight, I will publicly request that the Temecula City Council contact the appropriate county, state, and federal law enforcement authorities to investigate the appearance of influence upon the Planning Department and this board that have continued to favor Liberty Quarry despite the legitimate denial of the project through the public process. This board would be wise to deny fast-tracking this item while there is existing litigation concerning Liberty Quarry. Approving this item will likely compound legal fees for all parties involved and may visit investigative resources upon this county you might rather avoid. This matter demands serious consideration and hopefully a criminal investigation.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaker, Ernie Saldana. Mr. Saldana will be followed by, looks like Wayne Hall, but it's hard to read. My apology.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Good afternoon, ma'am. My name is Ernie Saldana. We've raised good children despite our adversities, and I want you to hear firsthand about our family. My granddaughter was born with an extra toe, an extra fingers. She has had to have these surgically removed. My twelve-year-old, my twelve-year-old son had recently had open-heart surgery. My other children have learning disabilities as well as asthma. I live in Cabazon next to a quarry in the 5th District called Robertson Mix. Does any of this have anything to do with the quarry? I don't know. But what I can tell you is neither does Riverside County. I don't think they want to know. I've never been contacted about a survey on health effects or anything regarding the state audit that was looked into regarding these reclamation mines. I find that troubling. I find it difficult to understand this. Whatever monies you think you'll save, you will definitely incur in your hospitals. I guarantee you that. Ask my son's doctor when he took, as much as he took for making him better. But more importantly, ask him why I went to Orange County instead of Riverside County, so that none of that money comes back to this county for the causes that they've incurred on us. Now, can I prove it? If I would, I wouldn't be here. I'd be in a court of law. But I want, I came here to help you understand that there is a human factor behind this, and it's not jobs. Because all you're doing by putting these people to work in a, in a, in a fast-track motion with regards to this quarry is dooming them to the reality that we live. I can't tell you from experience from most of the things that I've seen the company do is do unpermitted things, and that's what you have to look forward to, like stealing water, stealing electricity, diverting water sources. Circumventing the system by going through this process of, of fast-tracking is not a good thing. Just ask anyone that has ever passed an ordinance or a fast-track denied. Please don't, please don't do this to other people. We, we live in a community of about 4,000 people. It wouldn't be difficult for us to have a survey and determine how many other people are suffering in this way. But I understand that Temecula is a much bigger community, and I would hate to see them go through what we go through.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. Mr. Walls.
Wayne Hall.
Wayne Hall, okay. Sorry. Couldn't read your writing.
I heard an open hour back in 73. I had a crushed MacConex box. I'm a retired Marine at Camp Pendleton. I've got one of these cards. This is a V F D B card. We always slap it down on the table so people know exactly who we are and what we've been through. Here's the funny part. I'm against this fast-track, and I'm also against quarry itself. Imagine this, as your grandson is out on the football field east of the quarry at four o'clock in the afternoon, everybody, timeout, blow the whistle, stop. You get to hear a half a second explosion supposedly of several hundred charges at one time. Poof, it goes up. We're directly east of there at the high school, either Oak Valley or Temecula Valley High School. Oh, that's right, I didn't go to Temecula Valley High School. I went to Sherman instead at the time. That's a different story. What I would like you to know, if you can guarantee all those kids out on those football fields and all those parks out there playing pop, water, high school football, baseball, and everything else, can you guarantee that they don't have any effects from this quarry that is directly upwind in a wind tunnel? And that's what it is. Two, this is a hard rock mine. It's not a soft rock. It's not like Indio or even up there at Chatters. You don't come in with a, those are just pick it up and throw it in the back of the truck. You have to blow, for every inch you move, you have to, you know, blow it up. I mean, literally, for every inch. And we're going to be upwind of that or downwind of that. If you can guarantee the safety of my grandkids, my kids, that they're not going to have any adverse effects from that mine, and you can guarantee it on board, but if you can't, don't gamble with my family's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Next speaker is Tom Hammett. Tom is going to be followed by Ellen Nyrick. Tom? Tom Hammett here. All right. Tom in the back of the line here. Ellen Nyrick? Is Ellen here? Ellen? Ellen will be followed by George Taleo.
Excuse me, I'm still crying over the story about the man and his family from Cabazon.
And could you please pull the mic closer to you?
Yes. My name is Ellen Nyrick, and I live here in Temecula, past wine country. And I recall reading an article in our local paper last year, and the article stated that the cities of Marietta and Temecula were considering fast-tracking approvals for new high-tech and medical-related industries. The goal was to have our two cities considered as the new option for cutting-edge technology and the medical field. And our cities would be now in competition with Irvine and San Diego, which is a wonderful concept to fast-track something like that, high-edge and medical, and I'm still hoping that we will go in that direction. Somehow, when I think of a quarry, the vision of the cartoon, The Flintstones with Fred and his friend Barney Rubble come to mind, not high-tech nor medical research. Please give Riverside County a chance to be known for more than a blue-collar labor and storage distribution center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. George Taleo, George here. George will be followed by Alice Sullivan, who will be followed by Gary Grant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tavalloni and members of the board. I'm just going to cut to the chase right here. This whole issue isn't about fast-tracking for the good of the economy. It's about Mr. Benoit jumping over the supervisory lines and proposing to fast-track the quarry to give them another bite, and he's going to give them another bite, and another bite, and another bite. Their tremendous financial power will overpower us eventually unless something is done. I'm flabbergasted by the actions of three members of this board in the past who have thrown mud in the face of the people. Remember, the people are your employers. We, the people, own the land. We have the right, under the precepts of our government, to determine what is good for our town, what is not good for us, and what we want and what we don't want. You answer to us, not to Granite. I am flabbergasted by Mr. Benoit's attempt to put this up as a very good fast-track, jumping over into Mr. Benoit's district. That is unconscionable. It has to have something to do with a connection. You people have missed the point, and that's talking to three people. And one in particular, Mr. Tavalloni, you are a flip-flover from the world globe. I can't figure out anymore whether you were for the quarry before you were against it or against the quarry before you were for it. But I think it's time to remember the precepts upon foundation in this government was built, and it was so elegantly defined by the great president, Abraham Lincoln. When he said, "Our is a government based on government of the people, by the people, and for the people," not of, by, and for politicians seeking to further their political career, not by an outfit like Granite with their tremendous financial resources to override us and destroy our community and our way of life. You have missed that boat. So what I'm saying now is to all of you, it's time to make the right decision. We will not, we do not want this quarry in our area. We don't want it done. I say no, Mr. Benoit's fast-track, no, Mr. Tavalloni, no, Mr. Benoit, no, Mr. Tavalloni. The time has come to decide that you are representing us, your employer, and to stop the nonsense and the cover that's making this look like just a good old fast-track thing to build the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taleo. Alice Sullivan. Alice will be followed by Gary Grant.
Good afternoon, Alice Sullivan, President and CEO of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. The Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce has concerns that this fast-track proposal is designed to benefit Liberty Quarry. The Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, the closest chamber of commerce to the proposed Liberty Quarry, is opposed to this project. Yes, we must create jobs, but we should do so without compromising the health, the safety, and the economy of people living in the surrounding area. I'd like to share the chamber's mission statement with you all. To promote positive economic growth while protecting the environment for all businesses and by doing so, support the programs which preserve and improve the quality of life for the entire community. We urge you to deny fast-tracking of the surface mines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary Grant, followed by Courtney Coyle.
Good afternoon, Chair. I've been sitting idle over there listening to your references and discussion. Referring to Ordinance 3484750 relating to zoning and Ordinance Number 55519 implementing the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act of 1975 exempting it from the Guidelines Section 15061B3 because you, the board, see, Sequa has no possible effect on the environment. It's kind of like you are fortune-tellers. But where is the crystal ball? Where is it? Many times I have listened to projects you have created. Remember the general plan? How about the county pension plan? Or the county RDA process are bonded indebtedness for 40 years? Millions of dollars that we are committed to pay and the interest of court, all to the benefit of we, the people, or is it we, the certain people? I rest my case.
Thank you, Gary. Courtney Coyle. Courtney has nine minutes, provided to her by Connor Hughes and Richard Strel.
Thank you. My name is Courtney Coyle. I'm outside counsel to the Pachanga Band of the Senor Indians. As you heard, there are legal and procedural defects and important policy reasons why your board should not adopt the measures before you today relative to surface mining. To adopt these measures will expose the county to additional and unnecessary legal risk. The tribe respectfully asks that you reject or delay action for the following reasons as set out in great detail in the letter provided to you yesterday, and which I will briefly summarize here. Any one of these six points is a sufficient basis to reject the action. First, the State Mining and Geology Board has an established process relative to local agency amendment of SMARA. We have set forth that state process in our letter on page three. As you will see, it differs from what was outlined today by county council. And again, this came directly from the Department of Conservation. Number one, a draft of the proposed ordinance is sent to the State Mining and Geology Board. Second, within one month, the board reviews and returns comments. If changes are inconsistent with state law, they must be changed, or if comments are only a recommendation, the lead agency must consider them but is not required to revise the ordinance. Importantly, the third step is only then does the local board or commission atop the ordinance. And then fourth, the adopted ordinance is then sent back to the board and then certified by the board at a public hearing. We also disagree that the local ordinance becomes effective prior to completion of state review. I would want to know whether county council has even made a call to the state as to its process versus simply making her own interpretations. Second, we also disagree with county council's opinion that the actions before you are properly subject to the so-called common sense Sequa exemption. First, that exemption is only to be used, as you heard, when there is no possibility of an action causing a significant effect on the environment. Given the number and magnitude of significant impacts by surface mining in general and by Liberty Quarry in particular as set forth in our letter, it defies common sense to state that incentivizing new or expanded mine to Riverside County, a county that already has the highest number of surface mines in the state, has no possibility of causing environmental effects, including cumulative impacts. Second, no analysis was referenced in the staff report or was otherwise provided to the tribe or the public explaining how the county reached its exemption determination. Case law is clear that when is here the agency's determination has the effect of dispensing with further environmental review at the earliest possible stage. The burden of proof regarding the effects is on the agency, not the public. During the environmental review, doing the environmental review at the time of the two mining projects you heard about today, who may want to apply for fast-tracking, is not doing that review at the earliest possible stage. Third, while county council may be correct in a technical sense that an initial study per se may not be required under Sequa, a threshold analysis is required and must be made part of the record. That has not occurred here. County council's statement that impacts would be too speculative at this time is not supported by the record or the details of the, of the impacts that could happen that are set forth in our letter. Moreover, the board's action can be considered a Sequa project even when further decisions must be made before actual construction can occur, just like in amending a general plan, which you all are very familiar with, which requires the environmental review. The board's approval of a proposal that is a first or essential step leading to environmental impacts, even if it is just a piece of paper or will be subject to future environmental review, is still sufficient to trigger Sequa. That's not me. That's what the case law states. Third, the proposed action is premature given the pending state audit of the county's implementation of SMARA. As you heard today, the State Department of Conservation's Lead Agency Review Team, or LART, has already started its review of your county for the very first time. The LART program-- The LART program was established in 2006 by the state legislature to help lead agencies meet their responsibilities under SMARA. As you will hear from another attorney for the tribe, the LART will do much more than just audit mine compliance as referenced by county council. It will include a review of the SMARA laws that the local government has, such as the one that's before you today. It will look at the sufficiency of financial assurances, reclamation plan compliance, and the adequacy of the inspections that the county does. Absent a LART finding that the current regular track program is working, the prudent course would be for the board to wait until the final LART report is complete, examine how your overall program is doing, make any necessary corrections, then decide if fast-tracking is appropriate for all your surface mines countywide. Number four, as you've already heard, projects in the midst of litigation, like Liberty Quarry, but also classes of projects that are in litigation or highly likely to be subject to litigation, such as solar projects and mining policies for both, should not be fast-tracked. As you've heard, two lawsuits have already been filed against the county and Granite on the board's certification of the EIR for the denied Liberty Quarry. These petitions can easily be amended to include the proposed actions today if they are approved by your board. Surface mines should not be treated in a preferential way to solar projects. Both are complex and both involve a plethora of many of the same potentially significant adverse impacts to local governments and affected communities. To do otherwise would be to invite certain additional charges of positive bias by the county in favor of certain projects or certain applicants. Number five, the county has not consulted with local or tribal governments that would be impacted for years to come by the sweeping countywide policy shift for all new and existing mines. That's the piece we haven't really focused on much today, as all those other mines out there now could come forward into the fast-track. We also note that the staff report does not even attempt to address the concerns that the tribe previously submitted to the county on fast-tracking of surface mines or the questions posed by members of this board itself at the July 31 hearing. And number six, finally, Liberty Quarry will not meet the criteria for fast-tracking. So if that is the major driver for your action today, it should be rejected. The purpose and intent of the fast-track process is to expedite projects that will have a meaningful and demonstrable economic benefit to the county. As the second-largest employer in Riverside County, the tribes certainly support the creation of real jobs. However, a significant number of the asserted jobs for mining generally and Liberty Quarry in particular will not immediately or even quickly come online to provide the required level of economic benefits. This is precisely why your planning commission in denied Liberty Quarry 4 to 1 in August 2011 concluded, although the project would create approximately 100 jobs, these jobs would be generated in the future at a time when all improving sectors would also show increasing job needs, which could be several years from now. As a result, the increase in jobs is relatively small and does not help justify the project's unavoidable adverse impacts. Given that the reapplication for the quarry will not meet the required fast-track criteria, it makes little sense for the board to continue to move forward with the actions before it related to fast-tracking of surface mining. I see that I am out of time. There's certainly more to say, but we will remain available for questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Coyle. Laura Miranda. Apologize, Laura. Laura has nine minutes, followed by Cliff Hewlett.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Miranda. I'm legal counsel for the Pachanga tribe as well as a tribal member. I would like to provide you with additional, very pertinent information to the item before you today on the LART process, the Department of Conservation Lead Agency Review Team process, and then make two requests of the board. California is the only state in the continental United States where local agencies, not the state or the federal government, regulate mine reclamation. The LART review, I'm going to go through a little bit about what it's going to do and how it's going to affect the fast-track ordinance that's before you. First of all, just to explain a little bit about how the LART review works. It will review all of Riverside County's mining permits, its reclamation plans, its interim management plans, and its financial insurance mechanisms, annual inspection reports, and enforcement-related documentation for each surface mining operation in the county. It will evaluate the county's performance of procedural requirements of SMARA, such as the county's conducting of annual inspections of all the surface mine operations, requiring progress admission and annual adjustment of financial assurances, and requiring operators of idle surface mining operations to submit interim management plans. LART will also look to ensure that the county has the proper policies in place, including mining ordinances and planning actions. Finally, a draft report of the audit findings will be prepared and discussed with the county. The department will work with the county to develop a plan to bring the county in compliance with SMARA, and a final report will be produced. What has the LART found across the state of California? We think this is information that the board may want to be aware of. Since 2008, LART has documented several areas of SMARA implementation in which counties had the most difficulty. In the tribe's letter, we submitted a list of these problem areas, some of which are particularly relevant here to the issue before us today because they underscore the legal defects in the county's use of the common sense Sequa exemption. And those defects must be explained in your record by county council, which they have not. The Department of Conservation has already concluded that overall performance of lead agencies implementing SMARA in the state of California is poor. This is a determination that's already been made. And this reflects a number of factors, including financial constraints, limited in-house technical expertise, which I think was mentioned earlier here, and the lower priority this program has in contrast to other programs within the lead agency jurisdiction. What do we know about LART and Riverside County specifically? What we already know is that in 2008, the date of the last available report concerning this county, Riverside County was in the top five least compliant of 58 counties with the highest number of abandoned mines. Also in 2008, the most recent information available, the county was in the top 20 least compliant counties for percentage of mines without updated financial assurances. There's been a lot of talk here about this not being at taxpayers' expense. We just don't know this for a fact. Has the county received financial assurances from Granite that the county will not be left with a costly obligation to commit their reclamation plan if Granite is unable to? The LART may very well have something to say about county policies in this regard. Moreover, the county's SMARA ordinance, the ordinance that we're talking about, talking about changing, has not been certified since 1994, ranking it with only eight of 56 counties with the oldest certifications. So what does this mean for fast-tracking of mining in Riverside County? Given the previous data about Riverside County, that it has the highest number of abandoned mines and that it's probably been 18 years since there's been a real interface between the county and the state agency on its SMARA ordinance, the audit could very well reveal significant deficiencies in the county's implementation of SMARA. To amend the existing surface mining ordinance and to allow for new and existing mines to be fast-tracked when the statewide data shows that these operations have across-the-board deficiencies would almost certainly compound and increase these deficiencies. The wisest and most reasonable action to take here to protect the public's health and safety would be for the board to defer action on this item until the LART review is completed. However, should the county move forward over tribal and other stakeholder objections, the tribe would like to make two requests. And this is in conjunction with the items as introduced by Supervisor Stone and Temecula Protem Nigar. The tribe respectfully requests that the board amend the ordinance such that the supervisor for the district within which the project is located must support the fast-tracking determination. The tribe would also request that the board publicly commit to assuming sole jurisdiction for any fast-track authorization for the proposed Liberty Quarry mine. Given the highly controversial nature of this project and the previous denial by both the planning commission and the board of supervisors of this project, even the so-called modified project that's been introduced still irrevocably impacts sensitive environmental areas, including the Luceseno ancestral origin landscape, our one and only creation area. We believe it would be an improper delegation of authority for the Economic Development Association Director, one unelected official, to make such important determinations regarding the project's eligibility given the project's long-term nature, complexity, and level of significant impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Cliff Hewlett. Cliff will be followed by Robbie Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Cliff Hewlett. I'm a resident in Murrieta and also a board member of Save Our Southwest Hills, a nonprofit corporation. I'm saddened to find it necessary to even be here today discussing a project that I had hoped would long, a long time ago, had its worthy demise. The recent modification of the Liberty Quarry by Granite Construction to make it cut down on, I believe, 75 to 50 years is a welcome sign. Most people in this room could care less or recognize the difference because most of us will never be here for that long. The change in the modest change in the project makes me think about an analogy, putting lipstick on a pig. The process of that lipstick on a pig does not change the DNA of the pig. The modification of, the modest modification of the granite gravel pit, it's still a gravel pit. It's the wrong project in the wrong location. And I would hope it won't be necessary for any of us to have another visit on this subject. That project, you know, we all need Granite, but there's Granite available in other, less invasive locations. And I would encourage Granite Construction to seek another location. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Robbie Atkins. Robbie has six minutes, provided by Carol Brady. He'll be followed by Mary Lee Ragland.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today on this very important, important subject to us. What I have to say is shortened to the point. If you vote yes on this today, if you move forward with this fast-tracking, you're going to set in motion some things that citizens in Southern Riverside County are looking into. The biggest one is that we're actually looking into, can we secede from the county? We're looking into how that happens. Is it possible? We know it's an uphill battle. But that's how upset we are, and you have to understand that. Temecula is like a cash cow for Riverside County. We've been self-sufficient. Our city government has sustained itself through the recession. We have the best parks, libraries. It's an ideal community. It's one of your cash cows. And if you do this today, it's as if you're serving up the goose that laid the golden egg on a silver platter to Granite Construction. We have trouble understanding why you would do that. But if you do, we're going to take further action. We're going to put a spotlight on why this happened and escalate it up to a deeper investigation of what's behind this, really. Over seven years, we've opposed this project. The length of time is not because of what we did. It's because it took that long for Granite to get the numbers right. So it isn't that we've delayed the process. It's an impossible project to approve. That's why it's taken so long. We presented clear, factual, logical reasons why this is not the right location for this project, first to the planning commission and then to you, and it was rejected. For some reason, and we don't understand why, you certified the EIR. It makes no sense. You cannot say that you support Liberty Quarry because it will produce jobs. That's been made pretty clear. It's just shifting jobs from other areas. It's not like you're inventing the iPhone and it's going to generate business. Aggregate is aggregate. You have a certain need. It takes so many people to produce it. You cannot say that it's going to take traffic off the roads because they haven't said, oh, they're only going to ship it to the south. One of their own people said, well, there's a whole 91 project. Well, that would be shipping it north. So here you've got a mega mine, one of the biggest in the region, 1,400 truck trips a day, up and down that grade. There goes your air quality out the window. There goes your traffic out the window. All of those arguments just don't fly. You cannot say it's because of revenue, because of all of the loss of revenue, property values, et cetera, that would happen. And you can't say this is a good company because what they did in San Diego County when they were paid a penalty for falsifying their records in hauling away after the fire, polluting the water in 2007 in Oregon, now their bridge that they built is delayed because it's shifted.
Robbie, let me just, one sec. I'm not sure we gave you six minutes. Did we give her six minutes? Okay, so you have another three.
That's what I thought. Okay, I was talking pretty fast. In any case, business and governments often work together in conjunction to make good projects for the people. That is not the case here. This is not a good situation. It's going against the will of the people. And I would ask that you listen to your hearts today. Ask if your grandparents were standing here, would they be proud of action that you take today? Or would you just have to say to them, oh, that's just the way it's done these days? Again, to your grandchildren, as the history will shine the light on this situation, would you be able to say to them, oh, well, it's just the way things are done these days? Really, really, really? Is that really the way things are done these days? So I ask that you please be fair today. I ask that you look into your hearts and be fair about this situation. Is this really good for the economy? My husband moved to Riverside County to sell forklifts. That industry stopped dead when the recession hit. I mean, it stopped dead. But everybody's figured out a way to move on. We lost all of our savings, our assets. Everyone is hurting in the area. But just going after it this way is going to deny approval of other more high-tech projects that in the long run will benefit the county. So please, look into your hearts today. Thank you.
Ms. Atkins, before you go, you mentioned something that kind of puzzled me. You mentioned the secession movement.
Yes.
Could you define what you mean by that?
Seceding and becoming part of San Diego County? Because at least they understand and value what we have in Temecula. We have wine country. We have, I mean...
And they like the fact that we have quarry, possibly? Because they haven't heard in their county, right?
We probably wouldn't if we moved to San Diego County because their supervisors are very particular about where they allow quarries to be. We have great golf courses. We're a resort. San Diego County is a resort. So we are seriously looking into it. So we are seriously looking into it.
I guess that would put you into Southern, the new state of Southern California.
Maybe we'll make our own county, you know? Counties in California are much larger than in most of the country. This county is larger than many states in this country. So we could make a nice smaller county, but we're not going to have this. We're just not going to have it.
All right.
Can't do it.
Thank you. Mary Lee Ragland, followed by Ken Johnson.
I'm Mary Lee Ragland, and I'm very happy that I can speak to you again. This is probably my fifth or sixth time speaking to this group of people, and I do appreciate that privilege. I am a retired teacher, and I live in Rainbow, just about a mile or so from the Liberty Quarry site. My family has owned the property there since 1940. I've been involved in this cause of preserving our beautiful sacred land and its environment since 2005, when Gary Johnson came to the Rainbow Grange to explain what his company had planned to do with Liberty Quarry. I want to commend all of you for having the York commissioners, your land commissioners, listen to all of us because they listened for days and days and way into the night, and they really did hear us. And when they voted, they voted four to one against the quarry. And they also found the EIR lacking and not exactly what it should be. And now we are back here again, and it seems that what's happened is some of the supervisors here aren't really thinking about how we feel, the people. We are asking for you to let us have this land and keep it pristine and beautiful. Let the California College Ecological Preserve continue without being disrupted. We're asking for the corridor to be saved, and we're asking that Liberty Quarry be put in another place where it's not going to disrupt our lives. And now it's back here again on the table, and this is because some of the supervisors don't have us in their districts, which is kind of sad because you are all five supposed to work for the whole county and not try to give something bad or something that we don't want in our particular area. And I'm sorry to say, I can't even vote for any of you because I live in San Diego County. But I do have a quarry only three miles down the road, which was voted in by our supervisors, and it's in a very sensitive area, also with a whole housing development right below it and a college campus coming in. And it is no wonderful thing, and they aren't even using it because they don't need the aggregate. It's not even functioning right now. They've had to ask to have their permit extended so that they could go on into the future when they think they're going to need it.
Thank you.
And this is Granite Construction.
Thank you, Mary Lee. All right, Ken Johnson. Ken has three minutes provided to him by Eddie Johnson, so you have a total of six. Ken will be followed by Fred Bartsch.
Good afternoon, by now supervisors. I'm Ken Johnson from Red Hawk in Temecula. My remarks are directed at the three supervisors that have made a mockery of the whole EIR process. Fast-tracking is my subject. Why fast-tracking of large surface mines near heavy residential areas without obeying California's Environmental Quality Act would seem to invite fast-tracking by the State Attorney General's Office in enforcement of state law. To certify an EIR that has been vetted by a seven-year exemplary EIR process and rejected is wild-eyed crazy. The leader of this chicanery is that emigre from the Sacramento culture of lobbyism, whose district is fully 75 miles from the valley he would so blithely desecrate. Hopefully, no further such immigration will occur. We presented the Red Hawk poll to supervisors on October 30, 2007. Red Hawk is the largest community in Temecula, over 3,000 homes. It was established that 95% of the households in county-created Red Hawk were totally opposed to the proposed surface quarry and called on our supervisors to champion the quality of life and hopes of their taxpaying residents. Tuned out, we presented the Red Hawk poll, pardon me. We presented the supervisors with a 53-minute slideshow, rehearsing the many negative impacts of the surface quarry upon our area and calling for good neighbor policies. Tuned out, over 150, no, 160 local physicians warned of the health hazards associated with the controversial surface mine to our children and our elderly. What do they know? Tuned out, Temecula Valley's tourist industry provides 6,600 jobs and is incompatible with such a large surface mine. Tuned out, your distinguished commissioners, supposed to be free from influence peddling, ran five high-quality hearings and voted four to one to reject the quarry. That's vetted and hence rejected Supervisor Benoit. Tuned out, incidentally, the lone commissioner that voted for the quarry told of his cold sweats at night wrestling with his decision, praising the passion of the residents, but ultimately capitulating to what? Our San Diego State University Ecological Reserve, with six worthy decades of internationally acclaimed environmental studies, is incompatible with such a large surface mine as a neighbor. Tuned out, the record of Granite Construction in Nevada, Oregon, and San Diego is larded with repetitious violations, extorting charges, and incompetence. In Oregon, for one example, when Granite polluted the Yakinna River, it was considered that perhaps rather than fine Granite, the state agency that chose them should be fined instead. Tuned out, the distinguished commissioners recommended that the planning department be governed by the same rules that San Diego uses to keep developers away from the planners after their EIR is submitted and dictates to the developers the firm they must choose from for preparation of their EIR. Tuned out, a serious noise issue is raised by the contemplated use of chattering jake brakes as the gravel and hot asphalt trucks make their way up and down the steep quarry roads. Rather than just tuning this out, the planning department recommended that truckers be schooled to make a sparing use of their jake brakes. When this was ridiculed, Supervisor Benoit asked Granite if it could build runaway truck ramps along these steep roadways, which should be vowed to do. Give us a break. The completed EIR ruled that there were six significant and unavoidable negative quarry impacts, including air pollution and traffic. We're a commuter community, and I-15 South doesn't need 1,400 daily truck trips added to the mix when San Diego's regional aggregate supply study makes it clear that it can and will open quarries as needed when the market revives. No need to desecrate the Temecula Valley. Tuned out. But by gosh, when Granite Construction opens its wallet, tuned in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Excuse me, Fred Bartsch. Fred will be followed by Armando Lopez.
I think that's part of my time. I have nine minutes, I believe. It should be Armando Lopez and Cheryl Okimo.
But that was not noted here, but we'll give you their time.
Okay. Chairman Tavelloni, members of the commission, the board. My name is Fred Bartsch. I'd like to bring to you five points today plus a letter that I will bring partially paraphrased. Point one, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the county council recommended that renewable energy projects not be included as part of the change to the fast-track process. The reason given was pending litigation. When I requested after that meeting a copy of the pending litigation, I was given Independent Power Producers Association, DVA Energy, independent energy producers, and a case number. That case, when I looked it up, is about what's called SUNTAX, the fact that you charge solar producers so much per acre for that. That's the reason solar projects were not included? I'm sure you're, I don't need to remind you that there are two pending litigations regarding Liberty Quarry. The pending litigation was for the criteria for excluding the solar projects. How can you now say it's not the same for excluding surface mining on this project? Point two, referring to Liberty Quarry, the media has been discussed a lot recently. Supervisor Benoit recently quoted saying, quote, "It's hard to say that this process project has not been thoroughly vetted in a very public process," unquoted. Supervisor, the question you have to ask yourself, is this change in the fast-track policy about Liberty Quarry or is it about surface mining in general? If it's about surface mining in general, then approving this change means that future surface mining applications will not go through the same extensive surface mining review process that we have today. The process times are simply much, much shorter, and we all know that it will not go through the Planning Commission. However, if it is about Liberty Quarry, then you have to ask yourself, is this what you were elected to do to favor a large corporation and to push its project onto the people of Riverside, supply aggregate to San Diego County? Point three, even if the Liberty Quarry was approved today, and I see we don't have our technical guys, so I'll hold up my slide, there are several additional steps this would have to go through without. One is the South Coast Air Quality Management District has to review and provide a permit. The San Diego Regional Water Quality Control District has to review and provide an approval. The County of San Diego has to review, since part of this project is in San Diego County. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and California State Lands Commission. Not being an environmental-type legal background, I have sat through a lot of these review processes with the other projects unrelated. I can tell you that it would be, in my opinion, a minimum of two to as much as three years minimum for these projects to go through. So these jobs would not, in effect, bring immediate jobs by approving this particular project. Point four, the federal government has said that there are 33.7 million jobs which have gone unfulfilled in this country because people do not have the right skills. As a ratio, this would mean if something like 20,000 people could in fact be unfilled jobs in Riverside County, the county could be retraining some of these unemployed people in much less time than it will take for any surface mining permit to be approved and become operational. Point five, supervisors, as you know, you were elected as people, as public servants. Your responsibility is much similar to that of a police officer, to serve and protect the people you represent. I would also like to share some excerpts from a letter from Attorney Ray Johnson, who could not be here today. I will not try to go all the points that were brought up by the other legal councils in the room, just a few of them. Allowing such projects to be approved under Fast Tracking Procedure Ordinance 348 is wholly inappropriate and is not in accord with the state policy set forth for surface mining in the Reclamation Act known as SMAR. If the project is classified by the state as a geological area containing mineral deposits of regional or statewide significance, the lead agency would require to provide an additional 60, up to 60 days for their review and public hearing. Another point he mentions, moreover, pursuant to CEQA, any proposed surface mining permit will take additional time. If the project is determined to have a, require a negative declaration for the review of not less than 20 days if it applies. If an environmental impact is required to the proposed project, preparation and circulation of that document will take at least additional time, at least 30 days, for circulation of the draft. Another point brought up is under policy A32, which permits only 21 days in the county for the LCD review and only 10 working days for grading plan. 10 days to review a grading plan for a quarry. There's also additional checks required by the Fire Department and all other geotechnical reports within the county. He also wanted to mention that in addition to finding adoption of these two ordinances, that they're exempt, and this has been repeated by other councils, of the common cause exemption of Guideline Section 15061B3 is entirely unsupported by the narrative, reasoning, and record evidence. An agency's exemption to information must be supported by evidence and a record demonstrating that the agency was actually considering possible environmental impacts in reaching the decision for that exemption to apply. There is clear evidence that the proposed changes could not only but will most certainly significantly impact on the environment. Here it is readily apparent that no consideration of possible environmental impacts have occurred concerning the environmental impact of surface mining permits, reclamation plans, or even wind energy. The last point is that the Board of Supervisors, he believes, is making a much greater change than disclosed to the public record in always that reserving to itself exclusivity to the authority to investigate here or approve, conditional or disapprove, all surface mining permits and reclamation plans. Translation, all surface mining permits would then go to the Board of Supervisors and skip the Board of the Planning Commission based on the reading of the ordinance as written. And his comment was that it apparently was not maybe intended that way, but that's the way it has, in his interpretation, it would work. I thank you for your time. Thank you, Fred.